I call to order the meeting of Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, March 26, 2019, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present are Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mrs. Vicky Morgan, and myself, Nelda Sullivan. Mr. Roberts is expected shortly. Members absent, Mrs. Maris El Kiana. Let the record establish and indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation will be given by Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and Mrs. Morgan will lead us in the pledge.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us. We thank you that we're back in school, and we pray that everything irons out for all the school districts, and we pray for all the remedial work that's going to be done on the shift channel and get that back in service very quickly. We thank you for the school district and for all the hard work that's being done to help our kids be successful. We thank you for your watch care over our safety, and we thank you for all those that spend so much time and their hard work in their heart in loving these kids and teaching them what they need to know. We thank you for all that's being done in this town today and all the elections that are going on. We pray for your guidance and direction on that. We also pray for our government, for those in Washington, for our president. We pray for guidance and direction. We pray for a healing of parties and a healing of minds and moral values. We also pray for your will to be done. We also pray for those that are first responders for us, those in the service, and those that are firemen and policemen, and all those that stand between us and the people that would try to harm us or do us harm. We also pray for their safety and for their family's safety. We just pray that you'd watch over our district, keep us safe, in the name of your will and the name we ask of Amen.
Join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. On honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one We will now go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Section 551.071, to consult with the district's attorney concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer. Section 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And let the records reflect that Mr. Roberts has joined us in attendance.
The world is a better place.
We will reconvene at 7:00 PM. The board will reconvene in open session. We want to welcome each and every one of you here tonight. I know on the nameplate, hello.
Yeah, I don't blame you. I'll leave too.
It says Maris El Kiana is president. She's not here tonight. I am Nelda Sullivan, Vice President, so I will be conducting the meeting for tonight. First item on our agenda is special recognition.
And board members, tonight, we have a lot of great things going on that we want to share with you, so we're going to get started. We just want to start with the Academic Decathlon kiddos. The United States Academic Decathlon is a 10-event scholastic competition for teams of high school students. Students must take seven multiple-choice tests in art, economics, language, literature, math, music, science, and social science. In addition to the seven objective events, there are three subjective events graded by judges: essay, interview, and speech. Academic Decathlon is designed to include students from all achievement levels, and teams consist of nine members who are divided into three divisions based on their grade point average. So tonight, two of our teams are here, and we are going to introduce them: the Pasadena Memorial Team and the J. Frank Dobie Academic Decathlon Teams, who both earned a berth to the Texas State Academic Decathlon Competition by their extraordinary performance at the regional competition. J. Frank Dobie won the regional competition held at Laporte High School last month, and only the top 40 teams are selected to compete at the state level. In fact, the teams just returned from state competition. So I am going to introduce Jeremy, and I'm going to mess up your name, Meduzia.
Actually, it's Kevin Ackerman, because Mr. [inaudible] doesn't even come anywhere.
There you go.
Hey, I understand, it happens.
Okay, Coach, will you introduce your team?
Absolutely. So we have Pasadena Memorial. First up, we've got Kayla McCollough, and she is a sophomore, and this is her first year doing Academic Decathlon, and she has set a record for our first-year participant, almost hit 8,000 points, which in the world of Academic Decathlon is a lot of points. So she has been phenomenal to our team. Next up, we've got Roy Galong, and I do also want to point out that these are two students who have been -- Roy actually is part of the Early College High School, so he is like taking quintuple duty there, working on his diploma, associate's degree, and then taking on essentially 10 college-level courses on top of that. Next up, we have Emma Curran, who came across with two medals, right? Our first double meddler. We actually got six medals at the state competition, which is the highest we've ever gotten. In fact, last year was our first medal, so we went from one to six, so that's really exciting. And then next up, we have Emily Garza, who has been kind of the anchor for the team. She's the one that when everybody starts getting tired, she kind of whips everybody into shape and really pushes them, and it's been a heck of a team. Like I said, we're super proud. This is the highest score we've ever made, and these kids have just worked heart and soul, really pushing with the score that Dobie's put up, and it's just been fun this year. So we look forward to a lot of more years and coming here next year, hopefully.
And I'm not sure if we could recognize the Pasadena Memorial Parents at this time, if you're in the audience, that you came to support your student, if you'll stand and be recognized.
Hello, I'm Bob Darty. I'm one of the coaches of the Dobie Decathlon Team, along with Todd Garry. Where are you, Todd? Todd's probably hiding out back there somewhere. Oh, he's back there. And we had a great year this year. Sadly, because of a schedule conflict with HOSA, we lost two of our students, two of our best students, but these students really bounced back, and we saw a great type of leadership. We saw Hong, who's going to be one of the first students I mentioned, come forward and provide a great deal of leadership, along with Freddie, Freddie Orland, who couldn't be here tonight. And I mean, these people really embody what ACTDEC is all about, and we just want to thank the board for your guys' support. We want to thank Mr. Moses for his support. Decathlon isn't cheap, but your dollars are well invested with these students, and many of these students would not have the opportunity if it wasn't for Decathlon, so thank you guys very much. Okay, our first student that is here tonight is Hong. Hong was our honor student. He finished 11th in the state overall, and he missed one question on the math test, otherwise he would have had a perfect score. Thanks to Academic Decathlon, Hong will be going to Yale University for a ride. When I wrote Yale, they wouldn't even send me back a letter to him. But he gets a free ride, and that's student Decathlon and his hard, hard work. Okay, our next student is also a senior, and his name is Gus Rodriguez. Gus is going to be going to A&amp;M. As you can tell, he's an Air Force cadet. A fine young man. When I first met him and I asked him who his hero was, he said it was Hap Arnold, the founder of the United States Air Force. And not many people know that, but a very, very interesting young man who did very well for us. He came back after being off a year. Our next student is Men. Men didn't make the team last year, but stuck with it for another year and made it on the honors team this year. Men is amazingly knowledgeable. I get more and more shocked every time I talk to him about what books he's already read and everything he knows, and he's actually excited about next year's topic, which is cancer and illness and wellness, so kind of interesting topic. And who do we have next? Cameron Tobias here. Cameron finished fifth in the entire state in his event. He's just a junior, so he's coming back, and we want him to stay on the team. He finishes a long line of Tobias, as well one other sister who did great in Decathlon, but he's going to be back next year and is an amazing young man as well, too. And then we have Trang Vu. Trang was on our team, and this young lady, what amazed me about her was she initially did not make our region team, but even though she could have gone home and enjoyed her Christmas holiday and break, she kept coming up to practices. And when that student left for HOSA, we brought Trang in, and so it really demonstrated to me this young lady's tireless effort. And I think that's it. Okay.
Can we get the Dobie parents that are here to stand up, please, so we can thank them for all their support and hard work? Thank you. A lot of smart children there. So we're going to stay with the theme of smart children, and we're going to go to the PISD Spelling Bee. So as you know, our school district hosts two district spelling bees each year. Each of the 36 elementary schools send their school champion to the elementary district bee, and that was held on February 12 this year. And then the two winners of this bee then go on and compete against our middle schoolers and our intermediate students, and that was held on February 26. So school champions are challenged to study over 1,000 words from the Scripps 2019 Spell It book in preparation for the bee, and the students here tonight are the winner of the winners. So I'm going to turn it over to Amanda Khan, and she's going to introduce our spelling bee champions.
Thank you, and I am so happy to be able to introduce our champions of champions. First, we have our elementary runner-up, Chelseaa Minessis. She is a fourth grader from Mathis Elementary. And we have our elementary champion, Victor Gonzalez, and he is a fourth grader from Williams Elementary. We hope to see Victor and Chelsea in future bees. Would Victor's family, Williams' principal Christine Kopich, and spelling bee coach Norma Garcia please stand? And Mathis' principal Becky Vargas and spelling bee coach Donna Coshen, it rhymes with ocean, please stand and give those names.
Parents.
Chelsea's parents are here. That's right. So they couldn't spell all those words without all of this help. And then in our district bee, they actually represented us on Saturday at the Houston Southwest Regional Bee. That's the largest Scripps National Spelling Bee involving over 100,000 students and culminates with 53 of the best spellers in this region, and our spellers were there with them. So our district runner-up is Jennifer Lee, and she wasn't able to make it tonight, but she is from Carter Lomax, a sixth-grade student, and her principal, Norma Penny, and spelling bee coach Laura Mearhead are here. They'll stand, and we'll recognize them. Are they over here? So they are standing. And then we have Tanner Bowe. He is our district champion. He is a fifth-grade student, he's got a lot of good years there, a fifth-grade student from Morris Middle School. Would Tanner's family, principal Allison Lawalyn, and spelling bee coach Kim Edwards please stand and be recognized also? And those are our 2019 spelling bee champions, too.
Way to go. Get some quick pictures here. There's some big trophies. So we have celebrated students tonight, and now we're going to turn our attention to staff. Tonight, we're going to recognize one of our great Pasadena ISD teachers, Kirsta Jenny. And this past July, board members, Kirsta was named as one of Texas three, let me repeat that, only three finalists for the 2018 PAE MST Award for Elementary Mathematics. So Janet Nuzzi is going to come up, our PISD Elementary Mathematics Specialist, and she'll help us recognize Kirsta.
Wonderful. Well, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Powell and board members, for allowing us the opportunity to recognize and celebrate Kirsta Jenny for this wonderful accomplishment. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching PAMST was established by Congress in 1983, and is the award, the award is the highest honor bestowed by the United States Government specifically for K-12 mathematics and science teaching. And the award recognizes those teachers who develop and implement a high-quality instructional program that is informed by content knowledge and enhances student learning, which is why Kirsta Jenny was recognized as one of the state's three finalists for the 2018 PAMST Award. Kirsta has been serving the students of Pasadena ISD at Genoa Elementary since 2012. She has accumulated numerous hours of professional development and has served in numerous leadership roles, such as being a student teacher mentor, a new teacher mentor, a team leader, a member of the Districtwide Mathematics Assessment Collaborative, a member of the Meriting Teacher Leaders in Mathematics Education Academy, and a member of the aspiring Peerless Litigator Academy. She has shared her expertise with other educators through presentations at her campus and within the district, and as well as at regional and state mathematics conferences. Kirsta embodies the passion that we have in Pasadena ISD to develop our young students as mathematicians, and she clearly utilizes that passion to purposefully serve our students on a daily basis. So will you please, again, join me in celebrating Kirsta Jenny for her recognition as one of the three Texas finalists for the 2018 PAMST Award?
So we're going to stay with our theme of recognizing staff. We'd like to also recognize tonight one of our great Pasadena ISD teachers, Ben Gibbons. So Ben will come up. We like to embarrass you and make you stand up here while we talk about you. This past February, Ben and the students in his classroom were recognized as the grand champion of our district's Dreambox Challenge for K-4 Mathematics. So once again, Janet Nuzzi, PISD Elementary Mathematics Specialist, will recognize Ben and tell you all about the award.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again, Dr. Powell and board members, for allowing us this opportunity to recognize and celebrate Ben Gibbons and his students at May Smith Elementary for this wonderful accomplishment. And during the months of January and February, the students across our 36 elementary campuses competed in our district's first-ever Dreambox Math Challenge for K-4 Mathematics. And Dreambox is an online adaptive learning platform that we use in the district to promote our students' learning in mathematics while also closing gaps in mathematical understanding. So the 21 students in Ben's third-grade classroom completed over 5,000 Dreambox lessons over the course of four weeks. And it's actually 5,112, to be exact, because, or with that note, the majority of our top 10 classrooms in each of our grade levels completed around 1,500 to 2,000 lessons, so the 5,112 lessons completed by the students in Ben's classroom is definitely an accomplishment. So will you please join me in celebrating Ben Gibbons for his classroom's recognition?
So we're not done yet, and I think someone will be surprised that we're not done yet, but we have one more special person, in fact superstar, to recognize tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hickman, and she is going to have the honors of recognizing this individual.
So while we are celebrating mathematics, we wanted to take an opportunity to recognize the outstanding.
Do not cry.
I'm not going to. That'd be silly. Work of Janet Nuzzi. Janet, will you please turn your phone?
Janet, you made your teachers come up. Come on up.
All the way. So Janet has served the students of Pasadena tirelessly for many years, and we have witnessed the growth and learning of students, teachers, teacher leaders, and coaches in the area of elementary mathematics in our district. She's provided support to two statewide PAMST finalists and one national finalist who got to go to DC and won $10,000. She's served as the president of TASM Mathematical Association, which is our Texas mathematics association for our teachers. She's co-authored the book, Mathematizing Your School, with the famous Nick New.
It's already signed. He didn't look at it.
Along with a group of our elementary mathematics coaches. These coaches contributed to the book by writing chapters that highlight the great work happening on various Pasadena ISD elementary campuses. School board members, as you see, you'll find their autographed copy right in front of you. Several of these coaches are here tonight, and coaches, if you'll come up and be recognized So coaches and Janet, our school board is always so proud of the achievements of our group, and they love to see the work that you guys are doing, and we're very, very proud of you all. And thank you, coaches, for the work that you're doing every day with our kids and with our teachers to make our elementary mathematical students great. So thank you very much.
All right. Well, board members, we could go on and on and on, but that would make our night really long, so we've narrowed it down to these recognitions tonight, and we'll go ahead and get started with the remainder of our meeting.
We welcome all of you to stay, but if you came just for the special recognitions, we'll excuse you to leave. And there's still some seats up front. Moving right along with our agenda, our next item is public comments, and we have none. Third item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. And those opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is personnel section. Mrs. Morgan?
Yes, I have moved that we approve, addenda pages A through, it says B, but it's C. They're out of order. That's okay. A through C.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Mrs. Morgan, would you make the announcement?
Yes, I certainly would be happy to. First of all, James Crocker has been named High School Campus Athletic Director, Head Football Coach at Pasadena Memorial High School.
We don't embarrass you that much.
Congratulations. Did you bring family with you?
Yes, ma'am, I did. I brought my wife Melanie, my daughter Elise, and my daughter Claire.
All right. We're looking forward to a good season.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Already supporting the Maverick colors.
Absolutely.
Smart man.
Is it Demond Stafford?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that right? Demond? Okay. Demond has been named High School Campus Athletic Coordinator, Head Football Coach at Sam Raven High School. Did you bring family with you? Okay, well, you've got some family right. Yep, right there. Congratulations. Looking forward.
Looking forward to it.
I have said "bring the juice" like 20,000 times since then. So keep saying that. Bring the juice.
Next is Veronica Garza, and Veronica has been, Veronica's not here this evening. I think she's ill. She has been named Occupational Therapist in Special Education for the remainder of this school year, and when you see her, congratulate her and welcome her to Pasadena ISD. And that concludes the naming of these individuals.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to each and every one of you. If you were here for the personnel items, you're excused to leave if you'd like. And thank you for being here.
Hey, you took a cookie.
Moving right along on our agenda, the next item is Certified Personnel for Information Purposes Only and Support Personnel for Information Purposes Only. And looking through the records, we notice a number of our personnel are going to be retiring. We certainly wish each and every one of those a wonderful retirement. Our next item is Educational Section. Consideration and Possible Approval of the 2019-20 Student Code of Conduct.
I so move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of a resolution to the Texas Association of School Boards for the nominations of Dr. Deanne Powell as Superintendent of the Year.
I so move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Do you think we need to have any discussion on this?
Well, I can say that some people are very sneaky, because when I opened the board book, I review it, and I thought, who in the world put this in there? But thank you. Thank you very much.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, the motion does carry. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of primary request submitters for the Texas Education Agency Secure Environment TEASE and Alternate Approver Authority for TEA Log-In TEAL.
I so move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion carries. Item number four, consideration and possible approval of the Instructural Materials Allotment Antique Certification for the 2019-20 School Year.
I so move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by- Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item number five, consideration and possible approval of the state of Texas governor's office grant award.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
What is all this money allocated to?
And I don't know, Olivia, is Olivia here? You want to talk about this grant? It's one that we've had for several years now.
We are in the third year of this grant, and this money is allocated to pay for gang intervention specialists, and this is in a collaboration with the city of Houston because they have an anti-gang task force, and so they work with that group to bring somebody in to work specifically with our area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's awesome. As always, thank you to your grant committee. The whole group is awesome.
No joke.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, motion?
Aye.
Hearing none, the motion is carried. Consideration and possible approval for the J. Frank Dobie High School ROTC team members to travel to the Nationals, a national high school grill competition in Daytona Beach, Florida on May the 2nd through the 4th, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion?
Y'all look sharp.
Good luck, you group.
Yes.
How could you not vote yet?
Absolutely.
Very well.
We're very excited for you.
Good luck.
Good luck, you group.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now go win. Bring back those trophies.
Item number seven, consideration and possible approval for the J. Frank Dobie High School speech debate qualified team members to travel to three national championship events. The TOC Tournament of Champions Kentucky, NIETOC, National Individual Events Tournament of Champions, and NSDA, National Speech and Debate Association Championship.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Bailey.
We're looking forward to more Best Actress and all that kind of awards.
Well, the coaches are here, and they didn't stand up like those ROTC. Go ahead, stand up and be recognized.
I have a question. What's the difference between these, these three different?
Coach Barrett, you want to come to the microphone if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Oh, he probably doesn't need a microphone.
So each, throughout each year, our students don't just attend, there are different tiers of tournaments that a speech and debate team can attend. Our students only attend the tournaments that are qualifiers for these national championships, so they're exceptionally harder than, say, some of the local competitions. That's when you see kind of more rule to go to Harvard or some of the ones in Chicago. And so with those wins comes the opportunity to qualify for these level of tournaments, for these national championships in particular, and they all have kind of different qualifications and different specialties as far as the events that students can qualify for.
Is there one more prestigious than the next?
Uh, well, so for instance, the TOC is one of the oldest of its kind, and they offer certain events that maybe like NIDA and NSDA don't offer, whereas so, and so that's kind of the thing. Our students compete in a number of different events, and some of them aren't offered the other national championship.
Okay. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you for giving our students the opportunity to participate in these events.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The next item in our agenda is student achievement, and I think that we've seen how it works in our district today, and it takes our entire staff to make this happen, and we're very appreciative. Policy update and review, we have none for tonight. Moving on to the financial section, consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for February.
Move that we approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Roberts.
Mr. Roberts.
Is there any discussion?
The lone man.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of private sale with city of South Houston as property is used for Korean War memorial for $2,366. Address O. Virginia Street, case number 034-082-062-0028.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Just to add comments, when I picked this up and looked at it, this is a piece of property that was owned by an individual who was a veteran and a Korean War veteran, and he had erected this monument on property which he owned. It's my understanding that it was his intent to deed this property, but before all of this could happen, he passed away. So we're going through all of the requirements today to, for South Houston, to take over this property and continue the upkeep of it, and I do encourage you to go by and see the memorial if you haven't had a chance to. We need all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of resale of foreclosed property for delinquent taxes. O. Galveston Road, dash 015, dash 0111, dash 066, dash 0015.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is operations section. Consideration and possible approval of the continuation of priority facility upgrade projects and funding by the 2011 bond contingency pool.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is construction update, and we have none.
We missed the agreement between Harris County and PISD joint election.
It's further down.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, Nelda.
Under the miscellaneous section, we have no communications. Item number three is consideration and possible approval of the agreement between Harris County and Pasadena Independent School District relating to the joint election to be held May the 4th, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs.
Go ahead.
By Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez.
Question.
Discussion?
What is, other than we're going to be able to use some of their facilities for our voting, is our, did I misunderstand somebody, that someone will be able to go to all these different locations in Humble and vote for the Pasadena?
Right, and that was not our decision, that was the county's decision, and there was a ruling on that, so that's correct.
Who came up with that wisdom?
Was that the court, what, the commissioner's court?
Do you know who proposed it with the commissioner's court?
I don't know who proposed it at the commissioner's court.
Was this just, is this just for early vote, or is this the?
It's for early voting and main voting as well. It was approved for all voting. They can vote at any Harris County site.
Okay.
Are these the only sites?
We have posted the official sites for early voting, and they are still working on the sites for the main day election. Those have not been finalized, and everything is really subject to change up until the actual time of voting.
So, so the areas in which people have voted for 18 years, the people in the communities where they know that on election day, I go over to XYZ is no longer where we go to vote?
Well, it may or may not be, because the list hasn't been finalized as far as the sites, but if you're asking, in the past, we've been able to go to all of our high schools to vote, that those won't all be sites that'll be utilized.
You know, that's a tremendous, tremendous disadvantage for the people that live in our district.
Yeah.
And they're trying to make it easier, you know, sometimes people try to make it easier, and they make it more difficult. And I don't know if we have anybody at commissioner's court when they vote on this, but I really think that somebody ought to go tell them that this is not a convenience for our people. This is an inconvenience, because so many people go to vote, and it's hard to get them there anyway. And you've got a percentage of five or less going out there to vote on an election for a school board election that controls all the property in the area, and all you're doing is confusing people. So I hope, I hope we have somebody like yourself, you'll have to speak up loud, but somebody that'll, that will go over there and tell these individuals that this is not their game they're playing with, but they're playing with something that people have done for 18 years. It's not fair. It screws with people's minds is where they're supposed to vote, and so a lot of people, what they do is they just turn around and go home. So it's a horrible thing they're doing here, and I don't care if you tell them my name. I'm Fred Roberts. They tell them I don't like what they did, so, but that's my, that's all I need to say.
They do the same thing on early vote.
Yeah.
Free places.
I know, but I mean, there, there, it is a disadvantage to the voter.
Yes, it is.
To do something like this, and somebody needs to go tell the people over there that it's wrong, and I don't know if we've got anybody doing that, but we need to. Our, our community is used to voting in certain places.
Absolutely.
Some of them go before work, some of them go after work, but they know where they're going. If you're planning on voting after work, you're gonna go home or stop by on the way back. Here, there's a lot of places here, I've been here 64 years, and I'm not familiar with all of them by no means, and it's a, it's a disadvantage, and I would just wonder if anybody stood up when those individuals made these decisions, because it's, it's ridiculous at best.
This comes from commissioner's court or secretary of state?
It started at commissioners and then went to the secretary of state, and they waited on decision there, so Darla and her team meet with the county. They don't meet with the commissioner's court, but they do meet with the county, so the decisions aren't made at that level, but we'll have to keep an eye on this as we go forward.
Darla, if we were to conduct elections again ourselves, would we have to, would we have to adhere to these rules?
I will defer that question to Jody.
Okay.
So the education code requires that school districts hold joint elections with another entity that we share boundaries with, which would mean either the city of Pasadena, another city that's within our district, or the local community college. In 2011, we entered into a resolution saying that we would hold those joint elections with San Jacinto Community College. So we did that earlier, right, before they canceled their election, we executed a joint election agreement with San Jacinto and chose to utilize Harris County as the elections administrator, because in the past, there was, you know, issues with other things. So we, we don't really get to hold it solely alone on our own standing, we have to at least enter into an agreement with one other city and so, or community college, so we're kind of at the discretion of that other governmental entity as to, you know, where polling locations are, whether, you know, we and that entity are overseeing our own election, or whether we're contracting like with Harris County, who's administering multiple elections throughout the county on election day.
Okay.
So, so let's say this time, San Jac didn't have an election, they're out, it would just be solely us, or would we go into another?
We'd have to join with somebody.
So yes and no. If we enter a joint election agreement with San Jacinto College, and for whatever reason they choose to cancel their election at a later date, we have satisfied our education code requirement, and so then we would proceed withholding an election. So the, the issue is, is to the extent San Jacinto was holding an election this year or the city of Pasadena, all of those other governmental entities were utilizing Harris County or were intending to utilize Harris County as the elections administrator for the voting, you know, the, the early voting and the day of voting procedures and places and whatnot. Does that make sense? So had we entered into an agreement with San Jacinto College like we've done in the past and said we, the two of us are going to continue to oversee our own early voting and our own, we're gonna administer our own election, joint election between the two of us, we could have done that, and then once, you know, if, if San Jacinto Community College canceled their election, then we would be left footing the bill for the entire election, too, and staffing all of those locations and, you know, and that's a huge undertaking as well.
And there was even a question of equipment.
Yes.
Being available. There would not be any equipment available.
Yeah, okay. So by the time that we learned that.
You have to get your own polling equipment.
Harris County was doing this sort of thing, we couldn't even.
I will tell you, there's one advantage. The absentee ballot is one page, and it has just your councilman district and your school district members.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the agreement with Harris County on the joint election? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Roberts opposes.
If it's not broke, don't fix it.
Carries. The next item is to set the date for the next regular meeting. It's been suggested that Tuesday, April the 23rd, 2019.
I move that we set the next regular meeting Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
We gonna meet at the same place?
Yes.
And we're going wherever we want to go.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Don't mean to do what Dominique says it is. Nikki.
There being no further meeting to come before this board, I declare this meeting adjourned.